Okay, let's call the meeting the Tuesday, May 8th. City Council meeting, start off with the roll call to my left.
Troy Taber, Councilmember.
Ben Lawrence, Mayor.
Clark C.R. Nelson, Councilmember.
Greg Schneider, Councilmember.
Mike Warrington, Councilmember.
Mike Keller, Police Chief.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Jennifer McCosland, Assistant City Administrator.
J.T. Klaus, City Attorney.
Les Mangus, Director of Public Works.
Paula Bab, Deputy City Clerk.
Susan Renner, City Clerk.
Mark Decker, City Administrator.
All right, item three is the invocation. Let's see, Police Chaplin here this evening. Troy, would you mind?
Sure.
Ladies, thank you.
No problem. One bow your head, please. God, thank you for bringing us together again tonight as a city, as representatives, and pray that you're with everything, with us, with everything that we thank, do, and say tonight, and we do what's appropriate and right for you, in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Would you stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number five this evening is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? Evening, Bridget.
Bridget Bowman. I'm with Westar Energy Wichita, and I'm the Business Manager for the City of Andover. And I just wanted to give you a quick heads up that we are in the process of tagging the trees in Andover for the reliability tree program that's coming up. So, we are, we have you on a four-year, am I too loud? Okay, we have you on a four-year trim cycle. And so, we have our contractors, and I believe it's Aspland out here, Aspland or Rice, but I think it's Aspland, and they are going around putting door hangers on the doors of the people's homes that have lines that we're going to be trimming around. And, so I just really wanted to let you guys know that if you have some tree limbs near your lines, then you'll find a door hanger. The door hanger has information on it, and it tells you if you have questions, there's 855 West R-5 that you can call and talk to our Vegetation Central folks. And if there is a dot on your tree, the white dots mean they're going to prune the tree, the orange dots mean that they're going to cut the tree down. And we will work with you if you have a tree and you say, hey, I really would like that while you're here, I want that tree there cut down. If we can do it, we'll do it. I mean, we're not going to go across town and cut a tree down just because someone wants a tree across town cut down if it's not in our lines, but if there's one near where we're going to be. So, we'll start that next week. We're going to start at Andover and 13th. We're going to mainly be on the outskirts of town, and we'll be in and out of Andover in approximately a month. We won't go around the schools until after the 24th of the month. And now, we also trim services. When we came through four years ago, we did not trim from the pole to the house. We do that now unless you just absolutely say, I don't want you in my backyard trimming. And if that's the case, and the tree falls on your line and takes it down, that's on you. The reliability tree program has proven very, very effective. Our tree-related outages are less than, or I'm sorry, tree-related outages have dropped by 65% over the last few years. So, this is a great thing, and we will work closely with you. Our people are certified arborists, and the one thing that we need to let you know, we're really not asking permission to trim the trees, we're letting you know, but we have to have the trees out of the power lines. So, just wanted to give you all a heads up that if you see the trucks out here, that's what they're doing, and if you have questions, you can call the Westar, 855 West R-5 number. So, I do have circuit maps, and I can leave those with Susan as well, just to show where we will start and what all we will trim. So, that's my first thing. My second thing is that, also wanted to give you a heads up that we are in the process of changing out our streetlights to LED lights, all territory-wide. And we started in Wichita in March. We did around in Trust Arena because we wanted to get that done before the NCAA tournament was there. And we're working in quadrants in Wichita, started in the northeast quadrant, now we're in the southeast. We started in March. We will have all the lights in Wichita, Topeka, and their metro areas, so that includes Andover, changed to LED lighting no later than September of this year. So, the industry standard is now LED lights. They, they, we're putting in 4,000 Kelvin lights, that is the same light as the moonlight. And law enforcement, I don't want to speak for chief here, but I know law enforcement in Wichita and the other cities love the LED lights because they're brighter, they give a true color, so they've really proven to be a great crime deterrent. And we're salvaging our old streetlights. We've got a contractor that's experienced in recycling those and in disposing of any treated wood or anything like that. So, as far as cost, we are looking, hopefully, fingers crossed, to see a slight reduction in cost, although the initial outlay is pretty pricey. We will have less truck rollouts because less maintenance, the lights last longer, things like that, so hopefully you'll see a reduction in your monthly bill. I don't have numbers on that yet, but hopefully a reduction. And then, the third thing I wanted to do is give you a quick update on our merger. We are in the process of merging with Kansas City Power and Light. Looks like, right now, I'm going to say everything's a go. Looks like we should close on that, the first part of June. And when we do, we're looking at a 2% decrease in rates. We also have a rate review underway, and originally, we were looking at about a 2% increase in rates. If the merger closes, though, like we expect it to, then you'll have a 2% decrease. The rate review, if it does go through, you'll have a half percent increase. So, the decrease will go into effect in September, increase would go into effect next, like January, but overall, we'll see a net decrease of a percent and a half. Plus, we're looking at, if everything goes just right with the merger, we're also looking at a five-year moratorium on any rate increases. So, riders and surcharges still fluctuate month-to-month depending on the price of fuel, et cetera, but good news there. So, we have great things happening at Westar Energy, and I just wanted to share a few of those with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the surviving company's name? Is it, I'm right here.
Right where?
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is Westar going to be the surviving company, or?
We're both going to be the surviving companies. We're excited about that. It's a true merger, but no, we're going to have a different name, so.
It's a secret.
Kind of.
Okay.
Kind of, yes. I'll be honest with you, yes, they finally told us earlier this week, but they asked us not to reveal it publicly, and you and I all know that when they tell us that, we've got 5,000 employees, no, I'm sorry, we've got 2,400 employees, it's going to get out, but.
Just not from you.
Not from me, not from me. So, they'll announce it day one, but day one, we still will be Westar Energy because it'll take probably a year to rebrand everything. And so, like I said, it's a merger between Kansas City Power and Light and Westar Energy. Their holding company is Great Plains Energy, but after the merger, we will all have the same name.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are still in the public forums, or anyone else that would like to speak? There being none, we'll move on to item number six, which is the acceptance of the agenda. I see a request to add the agreement with Butler Rural Water District Number Five to the consent agendas, is that correct?
Right, just essentially approving that invoice that they've submitted.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the agenda as presented, including the item, which is now 9.6, I believe, on the consent agenda item.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Mike, to accept the agenda as modified. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving to item number seven, we have a fire prevention and community risk reduction.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Mike Roosevelt, Fire Marshal for the city here, and I wanted to briefly update you, city staff, and the city at large on a community risk reduction program that we've instituted based out of the fire department. This stemmed out of a couple of different opportunities that your firefighters have had to attend the National Fire Academy, and one of the things that we have learned about is this community risk reduction problem that exists in the communication necessary between the public officials and the city at large. And how do we get the message across about not just fire safety, but general public safety and the risks that we all face day-to-day, living in the communities that we live in, wherever those communities are across our great country? And one of the things that we came up with over the last several months was being able to partner with our community businesses, churches, civic groups, and other entities that have some ability to communicate and their willingness to do so on our behalf in the interest of general public safety. Never are we going to advertise an item or any of that sort of thing, but we're after the communication and the awareness of various safety initiatives and problems that exist within our community, and when we have an awareness, then we can collectively find a solution to those problems and situations. We are currently in partnership with about nine different entities throughout the city, and some of you may have had the opportunity to see some of the digital message boards in our community display a message, such as the one that you see on the screen currently. Fences don't stop wildfire. This past April and February and March, and the two years prior to that, not just our region, but other parts of our state have experienced great wildfire events, some of which caused great potential fire damage, some of which had some life-threatening issues. Fortunately, directly here, we did not have a huge issue, but your fire department helped in a number of issues across the state and the region. And this slide, fires, fences don't stop wildfires, simply is an attempt to get awareness to people, to be aware of their surroundings and the potential problems that could exist, both on their property and then in general property at large, and maybe start some dialogue about how those things can be addressed. We are currently partnering with nine entities. We're looking for additional entities to partner with the digital message boards. We actually even have this ad currently running on the large digital advertising display board along Highway 54. And as we go through the coming months, we seek to find additional places to display this message, as well as mirroring it on our Facebook page, and presumably, some of our partners are also going to mirror the message on their Facebook pages or whatever other social media outlets are available to them, just to convey this general safety message. This is part of a two-part progress, process at this point. We've partnered with the Chamber of Commerce, they're helping us get the message out to all of our business partners in the area. The second phase is with yard signage. There are portions of our city and our response district that we serve, as you know, we serve 36 square miles of territory in and around the city of Andover, that don't have digital message services available to them. And so, we're partnering with entities in sponsorship form and in-kind service to generate yard signs. They'll be approximately two-by-three, thereabouts, yard signs that can be placed in key locations around facilities and such here in town to be able to convey this same message to those citizens and visitors to the area that don't happen to travel by one of the many signboards that we're seeing. And we're seeing great response from our community partners in this effort, and greatly thank them in the days to come on our Facebook page. The names of those entities and individuals will become available so that everyone knows who is partnering for the greater good of our, of our community. We hope to see the yard signs begin to roll out over the summer. We do have one sponsorship in place at present, that's Collision Center, and others are hopeful to come, partnership also with Wholesale Fireworks, as they're going to be the primary producer of our signs. And so, we look, we're looking for lots and lots and lots of these partnerships. And I guess I have control of the slides. Our current slide, as most of you are aware, the, our severe weather season started this past April, although we really didn't have much in the way of severe weather. So, the forces at play here are beyond my actual ability to understand and dictate, but what we believe is that we're going to see our severe weather season begin now through the month of May and well into the month of June, a little later than what we typically consider our severe weather season. So, if thunder rolls, roars, go indoors, check out Weather Radar and whatever weather sources, weather radios that you have available to you so that you and your community can stay safe. And as noted up there on the slide and on our boards, we've also partnered with Butler County Emergency Management Agency with this program. We're hoping to have between 12 and 24 different visual and graphic messages to be placed at the various locations, going to run those approximately 20 days, about every month or so, and I think it's going to be a great opportunity for community risk awareness and prevention. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have at the time. Seeing none, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Good work.
All right, we'll move on to item number eight. I have a couple proclamations this evening. The first one is declaring Tuesday, May 15th, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. It's in honor of those law enforcement officers through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community. Also, to coincide with that is National Police Recognition Week, Tuesday, May the 15th through the 19th. Secondly, and I believe our police department is double-dipping on this one, but it's Public Service Recognition Week, and that is May 6th through the 12th, includes all public employees, including military, teachers, nurses, safety inspectors, social workers, police officers, firefighters, and countless other occupations who provide diverse services demanded by the citizens of their government. So, I'd like to make those. And we'll move on to item number nine, which is the consent agenda. That's items 9.1 through, is it 9.7 now?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda items 9.1 through 9.7 as presented.
Second.
Who did that? Mike? Motion by CR, second by Mike, to approve the consent agenda as modified. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, ask Mr. Joseph Hardy, meet me down at the podium, please. This is my one time I get to swear at a police officer and get away with it. Welcome aboard, but here we go, we got to get you under oath first, okay? So, raise your right hand and repeat after me. You can step forward, we'll have to share the mic. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Joseph Nathan Hardy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And ordinances of the City of Andover.
And the ordinances of the City of Andover.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
As police officer.
As police officer.
Of the City of Andover, so help me God.
Of the City of Andover, so help me God.
On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character or the public trust.
My character or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others accountable.
To hold myself and others accountable.
For our actions.
For our actions.
I will always uphold.
I will always uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Kansas.
And of the State of Kansas.
My community and the agency I serve.
My community and the agency I serve.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Have a gift, please. Any words?
No.
[laughter]
I look forward to serving you all, thank you.
Yes, sir, I have a, I have a couple. I wanted to introduce, since you approved his hiring in the previous item on the consent agenda, I want to introduce you to this young man, our newest Officer on our department. Joe is a 22-year veteran of the U.S. Air Force, spending most of that time in security forces. He has a Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice from the Community College of the Air Force, and is going to have a Bachelor's Degree later this year in Security Management. He's joined with us today with his wife of 18 years, Angela, and he's been a busy man, his nine children are with us. So, I'd like to welcome them all to our family.
All right, we will move on to item number 11, which is zoning case Z-2018-01 concerning 401 West Mike Street. Before I proceed with this hearing, I'll ask if any of the council members intend to disqualify themselves or voting on this, participating in this case because they have a conflict of interest. I will see none. Has the city clerk received a protest petition?
No protest petitions have been filed in the office of the city clerk within the 15 days following the Planning Commission's public hearing on April the 17th.
Awesome, and we, looks like we just squeaking by with the quorum here this evening, is that correct? Okay. I'll ask the council members if they've all received the unapproved minutes of the Planning Commission for April 7th, 2018.
We have, yeah.
All right, and I'll call on our zoning administrator to give us a brief report on the case and recommendation of the Planning Commission.
At their last meeting, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this rezoning case. You're probably familiar with the area on West Mike Street. A couple of years ago, there was a large zoning case across the street that allowed for the construction of some apartments. This applicant is following suit, he'd like to change the zone from single-family to multifamily, and your Planning Commission has recommended that change, change condition on plating?
I have a question, are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Is that the whole report?
That is.
Okay. Just from quickly reading this, the square footage of the lot is reduced from 10,000 to 7,800 square feet?
It's currently a 9,000-square-foot lot. With the dedication of right-of-way to the minimum standards, it would be in the neighborhood of 7,800 square feet. The Board of Zoning Appeals in that same evening granted a variance to allow a duplex on a lot, 7,800 square feet.
So, that's not before us tonight, that's, has already been approved?
Correct, that's the Board of Zoning Appeals' function.
My last comment is, it appears that boundary lines are a little vague, and properties may be somewhat encroaching, and part of this project is to clean that up, at least with respect to this lot.
Correct, to plat the property, make sure that all of the utilities are provided for, as well as the public street.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'd like to take this opportunity to open up a public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak. Is the applicant even here?
I don't see the applicant.
This is a public hearing, would anybody like to speak? There being none, I will close the public hearing and move the discussion back up to the bench. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance approving the finding and factors and recommendation, recommendation of the Andover Planning Commission for case number Z-2018-01 to change the zoning district classification from R2, Single Family Residential District, to R3, Multifamily Residential with the following condition, replatic and replating, and dedication of a 30-foot half-street right-of-way to the south side of Mike Street.
Second. All right, a motion by Greg and a second by Troy to approve zoning case 2018-01. Further discussion? Are there any other R3s on this street?
Across the street is R3, it's a collection of two and threeplexes.
So, there's already a precedent?
If I, if I read the minutes correct, that's the reason that he is making this change, is trying to match up from across the street? Is that correct, Les?
That and maximize the use of his property, I'm sure. Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Greg and a second by Troy. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, 2018 Transportation Improvement Program.
The Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, WAMPO, is responsible for the disbursement of federal funds for road projects in the Wichita area, and the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Plan, is a four-year document that lists those projects that are in the queue for federal financing. Recently, WAMPO changed their format to adopting a new tip every other year, and this is the year for adopting a new tip. What that tip does, by policy, it carries the two years of projects that were in the previous tip forward, and opens up the tailing two years to new projects that are in the long-range plan only. So, I'm sure you all know that we have a long list of projects that are in the long-range plan, the Move 2040 Plan. What our action tonight is, is to approve a list of projects to be submitted into the TIP, to be queued up for funding over the next four years. Those projects that we're recommending, the 159th Street KTA Bridge is a change in funding. We've had some changes in the scope of that project at the request of our partner, Kansas Turnpike Authority, that have added about a million dollars to the project. We're asking that WAMPO split that additional funding with us. The 159th Street, US 54, 400 to Central Avenue Road Improvement Project, and the Andover Road Bike Ped Project from Central to US 54, in exchange for the Andover Road, 13th Street to 21st Street Bike Ped Project that will need to be held back because of the school construction activities. So, those are the, the projects that staff recommends we submit.
So, in prior years, didn't we do that every year?
Yes, we used to do it annually, they've moved it to every other year and just to carry forward two years.
Troy, you're a WAMPO representative, any, any comments?
Um, no, I think this is, this is really good for us. So, I would agree with all of this, as presented. I guess I would say that Les has done a pretty darn exceptional job getting our projects in the tips, and we've got quite a few pretty amazing projects for various reasons, but I guess when you compare it to a lot of the, the other communities, we're very good, so.
Was that a motion?
Sure, that'd be a motion to approve as presented.
All second?
I'll second.
A motion by Troy, second by CR to approve the two thousand eighteen WAMPO tip applications and authorize staff to submit those. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, fireworks sale and discharge. Somebody handling this?
It's something that we look at annually. We just changed the date. Last year, the Fourth of July was on a Tuesday. This year, it's on a Wednesday. We just stayed with all the same hours. Just changed the dates.
Sure.
And the fire department will be there. It says in that bottom, I'm sorry, I was not prepared to speak to this, but the fire department will be out at Thirteenth Street with emergency staff and so that our citizens can go out there and shoot fireworks and...
At the park. Thirteenth Street Park?
Yes, sir.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt a resolution establishing the dates for sale and discharge of the fireworks within the fine city limits of Andover for the year of two thousand eighteen.
Second?
Motion by CR, second by Mike to approve the resolution concerning fireworks sale and discharge for two thousand eighteen. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number fourteen, inspection and licensing fees.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, as you recall in some workshop discussions, we have been, staff has been working to update our building codes from their previous, I think, two thousand six. We can get the building official and city engineer up here, but we're trying to update and make those codes current. Our first step tonight, we would like to do, and as a result of being involved in budget, is look at, well, recommend increasing building permit fees and other license fees. We talked with a group of representatives from the Wichita area Metro, uh, excuse me, Builders Association and a few local builders. We had builders representing Cornerstone and Prairie Creek. There were a couple of other groups in there as well who listened to our reasons for wanting to increase permit fees. I won't go, you've seen this slide over and over again about where we sit with the mill levy being higher than everybody else because of a variety of factors, including the college. We can go on to the next one. I won't go into much detail, but what I told the gentlemen is that, you know, raising our mill levy to cover these costs isn't an option because we're already in a competitive disadvantage with Sedgwick County. So we have to look at our fees. And if you look at the last nine years or so, since essentially the housing crash in two thousand eight, our fees haven't really come close to covering our costs with inspection. You know, when we set these in two thousand eight, we didn't realize we were going to go from two hundred housing starts or close to two hundred housing starts to fifty or sixty in some years. We've gotten closer to a hundred, but we, we went down significantly. I will say, I feel like since two thousand nine, or, excuse me, since the time we hired Steve as the city engineer and building official, we took half his salary and credited that to administration instead of building inspection. So we, we cut the salary on that. And then, of course, we have a individual who got half, more or less half of his fees charged to building inspection and then to some other things. And we anticipate the new person we hired being about the same. Plus, we have a full-time building inspector charged with this. The other things I don't think we really, you know, think about as much is there's indirect costs, including health benefits, obviously, are in that, that number for the people. But we have to house these people. And that's a, you know, part of the reason we went out and bailed a four-million-dollar building is you have to house your building inspection department and we have to pay insurance and we have overhead. In addition, we have administrative people who have to support this department. And I can tell you, in the last couple of years, our HR people have spent a considerable amount of time with building inspection. I would hope in the future that won't be the same, but between advertising and some of the other issues we had, there was a lot of administrative time. And then, going over this issue, it's involved all of us, you know, so it takes up a significant, a, a good portion of our time. I think I put, you know, charging two and a half percent of some of our salaries this to show the true costs. So, you know, by any measure, we've been losing money in our inspection department in terms of cost. We can go on to the next slide. Projecting going forward, which obviously two thousand eighteen isn't going to happen, you know, we're recommending we start these January first, two thousand nineteen. That was one of the things the gentleman from the Wichita area Builders Association said. If they could get a good amount of lead time, they have to deal with tighter lending restrictions and increase in costs that have been upon them in the la, the last few years. And, you know, they would ask a little bit more lead time in preparation for that. I don't have any objection. In fact, I'm fine with recommending it because we didn't have anything budgeted for those increases this year. So there's no budget impact, per se, in terms of what we're going to be allowed to spend and, and that type of thing. But next year, we would like to have it to put in the budget. You know, I think Don and I have talked about increasing revenue estimates, a hundred thousand dollars, even though we're showing significantly more than that. I think everybody up here knows this is all dependent upon how building does. This year, we've had eleven housing starts. We attribute that primarily to the fact that Prairie Creek hasn't gotten going. They had, they built out and then they've had to wait to get going on both their duplex and their single-family housing. Cornerstone's kind of in a lag period, too. So those two subdivisions will get going next year. And we look forward to, you know, increased building. Plus, hopefully, we have some development going on with Yorktown. We're not quite as sure on that, but we think that's a possibility as well. So we hope to see some good fees, but we never know that for sure. But you can see, I'm projecting, I'm projecting a slight surplus up until two thousand twenty-six and then we'll get back to where we're about breaking even if expenses rise at the typical rates and revenues, you know, increase slightly, although we haven't seen huge increases year over year in revenues on building permit fees, unless you happen to have a Sunstone apartment come online and you might get a good jump in one year. The Wichita area Builders Association says, informed us that M A B C D, the Sedgwick County Wichita Group, will adjust their fees in accordance with the surpluses they make from this. You know, we've got two people plus me who really track our finances on a regular basis. Those places have like fifteen budget analysts that are looking at all this stuff and can decide if they're, you know, made a surplus and that type of thing. I just told them it's unrealistic for us to adjust our permit fees based on the fact that we might make an additional thirty thousand dollars in one year. You know, previously, we've lost a lot of money. But if we do this, we'll keep fees at this rate and probably wind up reviewing them in another eight or nine years. It's not something that we look to come to the council with on a regular basis. So that's why when we update it and we're increasing it two hundred and fifty percent, it's because we probably won't come back here again and ask for another increase for quite some time. We can go on to the next slide. You know, the common refrain is that our fees out here are too high and we're substantially more expensive than Wichita to build. I will point out that Wichita has, you know, over two thousand dollars of that cost with their water tap fee and their water equity fee. You know, some of this is us, obviously, but, you know, some of it we can't control. And proportionally, what I'd like to remind people is that, you know, on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, you're going to pay about eight thousand dollars in fees to get a building permit out here. But that's no different than what a person winds up paying when they live out here between sewer, water, special assessments, and property tax. If our fees were double what our typical yearly taxes and special assessments and everything, I could see the complaint, but this is proportional to everything else we're charging in this community. It's not like they come out here and get a twenty thousand dollar fee put on them and then the next year, you know, they're, they're only paying like eight thousand dollars a year. This is in my, in my estimation in proportion to all the other fees and taxes that we have out here. Just like to make one more point about our work with developers. And I don't, yeah, I just want to remind the council is we've just said, at a point, we went before a committee to grant twenty-year special assessments. Now we do that as a matter of business. We just provide that. We don't have a waiting list for development like we did at one time for financing development. Five or six years ago, during real rough times for builders, we went in and did the Neighborhood Vitalization program for the entire city to give a rebate for all new building. And we've continued that program with a fifty percent rebate in a more targeted type way. We've waived building permit fees in this part of the Neighborhood Vitalization program that we just did. I don't think we'll do that again. You know, I think that was probably a little too generous. We're obviously exploring a TIF district to help with some building. And, you know, impact and other fees as an overall percentage of city expenditures are pretty minor now. We don't charge any operating costs to any of these fees except for, obviously, building permit fees. We try to utilize them for arterial improvements and other park improvements, but they really don't, you know, in the park department, it might be ten percent of our overall improvement budget in a year. Street, because of our sales tax, it's down below five percent or so. So the, none of these fees are, you know, a big part of our budget, but they're needed because, you know, we have various needs and requirements with growth and particularly to offset these building inspection fees. I briefly want Steve to mention the other fees we've added in here that we typically, well, we have not charged at this point, and talk a little bit about that. There's some new fees, you know, the, some of the permits and that type of things that you could go over. And some of the increases in licensing fees also we've talked about.
Steve Anderson, I have my building official hat on tonight. I'm not quite sure I know what you mean other than we've added some different contractor license categories that we'll be charging for. These categories didn't exist in the past. Help me out, Mark. Yeah, there's, there are some different permit categories as well as contractor types such as roofing. Those aren't where the money is. The money's in single-family and that's the area that we have to raise the fees in. The rest of the additional fees are fairly incidental.
I've got a couple of comments. Number one, you have put into hopeful effect what we had talked about at a workshop meeting some time ago. And the suggestion was to try to figure out a way to get this into at least a break-even basis without negatively impacting our overall property tax matter. And you could quibble about one or two of these things, but overall, I think you've done a very nice job of trying to get this accomplished. I know that I, and probably was a minority in the hundred, one hundred percent tax rebate program for a while. Took a lot of heat, but the purpose of that was trying to get something cooking within the city. And it, it did that for a while. I think what you've done here is very good and not waiving the building permit fees within those NRP areas is probably a very effective manner for us. So I'm very much in support of what you're proposing.
Mark, what would stop us from going ahead with this now?
It's effective as of the adoption of the ordinance and, and that date. I think, you know, Steve had talked about that at a minimum, he thought we should do ninety days, you know, from the publication time, that the lead time, just, you know, as, on a professional basis, it would be hard to say do it any quicker than that, in my opinion, to give them, them time. The only thing that I, I could say that I would hold to is, again, the builders, and I know you talk to them as well, aren't particularly happy with our current fees. And this was the one thing we came out of the meeting with. Well, I said, you know, I essentially told them that we're not going to lower these. And, you know, I'm projecting this as a break-even. And the one thing they asked for was a more significant time as a warning period or to get everybody informed of it and give them plenty of time to get ready for it. And I was like, well, if that's the one thing you want out of this and, and, and really would like us to go to the council with, I think we can live with that.
Yeah, and if we started it sooner, that would get us out of the shortfall quicker. The special fees, when was that, that went, that did not go into effect in the nineties? The special assessment fees?
Yeah, the, the fees for street, uh, impact and park impact and I think the sewer fees were in the nineties sometime. So they've been, they've, those have been around for quite a while.
They haven't changed either.
They haven't increased, yeah, so, so there's really not a whole lot of complaining to do or, you know, or even waiting, you know, till next year to do it. I suggest we start it in ninety days.
I might ask, Mark, did you, your impression was that the majority of the developers asked for a lead time to the first of the year?
That was, that was, what, two or three of, two or three of them? And the executive director of WABA, you know, thought, he, he's gone back to his own group and said, that's what they came away saying staff would recommend. So I can't, you know, I can't say that there was a vote at WABA on it, but that was the rep, the, you know, the eight to ten people who were in the room representing WABA, you know.
I, I know it's highly unreasonable for me to ask you this, but is there a dollar amount of the additional revenue that Mike's proposal would have compared to trying to get this started at the first of the year?
Can I make a comment to that, Mark? There's, there's basically two components to the fee increases and we're showing about a hundred percent increase in single-family, plus or minus. The other component is in the license fees, which isn't a huge amount, but we've issued most of the licenses. So starting what's probably going to be about August, you know, is not going to generate additional fees from the licenses. Only those permits pulled in the last third of the year. I, I don't want to whine too much and influence your opinion, but I think it's much more convenient for us and particularly cell to start at the first of the year with a clean break. And so I, I would tend to support the first of the year, but we can do it sooner if you wish.
I would, the one comment I would make is obviously any building that goes on in Prairie Creek until the end of the year, Winchester and a few other places won't pay permit fees because we have that in the NRP plan. Like I said, we plan on getting, getting rid of that. So that's, that's another way that the impacts won't be as much. Having said that, from an administrative point of view and having to work with every day, I, you know, that's, I understand where they're coming from. From a financial perspective, it's going to be hard for me to argue that I want more money later instead of sooner. I mean, if somebody, if you guys wanted to make that motion, I'm not going to sit here and object. Obviously, budgetary-wise, anything helps, you know, and, but at the same time, I want to volunteer again that that was the one thing they seemed to be satisfied with, that we would delay this.
Okay. Well, it appears to me that we hopefully would have an affirmative recommendation to the resolution amending the fees and so forth. And this question of timing, I, I'm inclined to proceed with, with your recommendation, but I can understand the other side. With, with that statement, I would move to approve the resolution amending and restating Resolution zero eight dash two one, setting permit, contractor license, and miscellaneous related fees pursuant to Chapter four, Article one, Section four dash one oh three of the code and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Second?
All right. We have a motion by CR and a second by Troy to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion?
I still think it should be sooner. I have no, nothing against the resolution at all and I approve, I agree with it. If, if it saves us an extra ten thousand dollars from here to, to the end of the year, so be it.
The resolution doesn't necessarily contain the date of starting, right?
Yes, it does contain the date of starting, and I think it's important to note as you're going through this process that so does the ordinance, and the resolution can't take effect without the new ordinance. These two things are legally created to work together and are architecturally, from a legal standpoint, designed to work together. To be perfectly clear, what we have done is basically removed the fee amounts and categories from the city's code and ordinance and made it so that you can approve those by resolution in the new ordinance. The current ordinance actually contains all of the fee types and everything else, and then has little X's where the amounts go, in the theory that you will set the amounts when you see fit, as you see fit by resolution. So, I don't, I don't want anybody to be confused into thinking that this resolution can be operative without the ordinance, and I do want to point out that in the last line of this resolution and on the last line of the ordinance, they say they become effective on the first day of January 2019.
This is not dissimilar to what we've done, such as with the fireworks. We adopted an ordinance, but now we can make these yearly or annual changes or periodic changes by resolution instead of changing the ordinance, right?
Yeah, the theory is that anytime you legislate as a city, we have to do that by ordinance. That's what the law says, we have to pass, and there's a procedure for that, including a potential veto by the mayor. And there's also a procedural obligation as it relates to publication of the summary and other legislative requirements as it is set forth in the ordinance. There are, however, certain matters, like for instance, deciding which days you're going to allow the sale of fireworks, that are really ministerial, they're administrative in nature. And the thought here was that these fee adjustments, which could be made more regularly if necessary, could be done by simple resolution. They still need to be in writing, they still need to be approved by the governing body, but they wouldn't require the procedural formalities of an ordinance. So, all of those fee types have been removed from the ordinance and included in the resolution along with the amounts. And so, I just, it just was important to me that no one thought we could do one without the other.
The other comment, Mike and I, I'm all with you on trying to progress the city as good as we can financially. And I know that tonight, I think we're going to have to have unanimous approval of this resolution, I presume.
If that's a question, I don't think so. I think if there's a vote of three to one, the mayor will be forced to vote.
Only vote in the, can only vote on an ordinance, not a resolution?
No, you can, you can vote in the...
Only in the affirmative?
The resolution, believe it or not, the resolution will pass on a vote of three to one. Your vote will be required on the ordinance.
Only on the ordinance.
We really don't have a dispute on the merits.
No, there's no dispute. I would just like to see it sooner than later. I mean, we're, we're going to be waiting eight months.
Well, in the long scheme of things, where we're looking at one, five, 10 years, in my mind, it really doesn't make any difference, and it'll make for a smoother transition and also allow us to have a little bit of credibility with some of those builders that we've kind of unofficially told them this is where we intend to go. And I'm, I just tend to favor that proposition on this proposal.
I think that's where they want us to go. They want us to wait as long as possible.
I think they're still going to complain in January of 2019.
I think so, too.
But I'd have to support it in its current phase. I mean, you call it a gentleman's agreement, call it whatever. We reached out to them, trying to soften the blow as much as we can. I mean, they are, they do help us develop this community, right or wrong, and I think the fee structure, we're not arguing about that. I think it's spot-on. If it comes to time, I'm certainly supportive of waiting till January, but we'll see where this goes. So, we have a motion by CR and a second by Troy to approve the resolution. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the appropriate ordinance here.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the ordinance repealing and replacing Article 1, Chapter 4, Building and Construction of the Code of the City of Andover, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign the same.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Greg, to approve the ordinance as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I just want to remind you again that the building official will be coming back with code updates for the next few meetings, so we're not done yet, but I would say you're done with the hardest part, in my opinion.
Move on to item 15. On-call engineering services agreement.
Steve Anderson with city engineer hat on. We've used Trans Systems on a number of types of projects, design of KDOT projects, consulting and design on Yorktown, deep studies, other studies, and there's been a need arise for some assistance from them in reviewing some of the school sites. We have a new plat that's going to be coming online. We have some major activity on North Andover Road, and so this is a vehicle to allow us to contract with them for a term and a total dollar amount, but assign tasks individually as the need presents. So, the total dollar amount is $25,000. The term is through the end of next year, December 31, 2019. The individual tasks will be authorized at an not-to-exceed amount established with an Exhibit B in the contract. The motion is set forth under recommended action.
How much do you anticipate a particular on-demand fee would average?
I'm guessing five to 7,000 bucks, five to 10.
You're looking at four or five of those?
And it keeps us from just having a two- to three-week delay and coming back to you folks every time for fairly small, small amounts and small scopes with a trusted consultant.
Sounds like a retainer fee to me.
That's what it sounds like to me, too. You know, we've, over the last 16 to 20 years, we had an engineering firm that we did a lot of business with, and it kind of went from us bidding or even soliciting proposals from any other firm, just to send in all our business to one firm. I know they're trusted, I know they do good work. That's not really my, my argument, but, you know, there are other engineering firms out here, other than Trans Systems, and that's not a knock against them, because I know they do, they do exceptional work. But at what point do we, at what point do we draw the line?
It's not stated in the agreement, per se, but I think, and all that Les weigh in here, too, they do offer a particular expertise in transportation engineering that I think we'd have a difficult time. I would suggest that I would use this for transportation consulting and not necessarily any other types of service, but we don't have that specifically worded in the agreement, to be fair.
Would you concur with that, Les?
Yes, they've got a real expertise in both traffic and transportation.
I concur as well. I'm just making the point. That I wanted to make, but we're not talking about a lot of money.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the on-call agreement with Trans Systems at an amount not to exceed $25,000, and authorize the mayor to sign such an agreement.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Troy, to approve the on-call engineering services agreement as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep. And move on to item 16. Executive session, how many people would you like in this meeting?
I was just thinking that myself, the city attorney, and of course, the governing body.
For how long?
Period not to exceed 20 minutes to reconvene at 8:20.
I need somebody to make that motion, please.
So moved. Second.
Motion by CR, second by Troy, to go into executive session, approximately 20 minutes to include the governing body, the city administrator, and the city attorney, consultation with said attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship pursuant to Kansas Statute 75-4319B2. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Take the...
I'm trying to keep it down, but somebody...
Take the... I'm trying to keep it down, but somebody...